Someone very tall had this before me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The September 3, 2025 meeting of the City Council will now come to order at 6:00 PM. Winnie, may we have a roll call, please?
Jessica Ayers.
Here.
Nick Card.
Here.
Kevin Keating. Mike Kurlinger.
Here.
John Quinn.
Here.
Zach Smith.
Here.
Kevin Stein.
Here.
And Garrett West.
Here.
We have eight present.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum. City manager reports, Mr. Field.
Good evening, Rob Field, City Manager, here to give you a report about some of the goings-on about town. First off, the water outage response, it's no surprise to anybody up here on the dice, I'm sure, that we had an issue at the Duff Treatment Plant. We, city staff was part of the response on this. I want to thank Erenott and KJ Wilson in particular for the work that they did working with Medford Water to sort out what had happened. Still figuring out what exactly, what the exact cause was. Met with Mr. Taylor yesterday about this subject. We are going to get together soon to debrief on this. One of the, sort of the silver lining in this is that it gives us the opportunity to kind of practice our emergency response and look at if this had been a more dire circumstance, maybe we can get, be a little bit better prepared. So it's probably too soon to call it a dry run, but it's kind of similar. Thank you. Rogue X, pretty successful weekend, had 16 teams competing in a volleyball tournament last weekend. This weekend, we're having the Show Me Reptile Show. And a quick reminder that the Aquatic Center is closed down until September 9th for its annual maintenance. St. Mary's, Mr. Keating will be especially attached to this one. St. Mary's is celebrating their 160th anniversary. School was founded in 1865 before moving to Medford wisely in 1908. They have over 500 students, extending down to fifth grade, a number of whom are international. Elmond Hotel, four-story hotel, 134 guest rooms. If you drive up and downtown, you will see that it's well underway. We have a groundbreaking ceremony planned for next Friday, hoping as many councilors as possible and the mayor can make it to that. It just got scheduled, so the invitation will be heading your way shortly. Finally, and I want to ask Chief Thompson, actually give this part. We were a big part of the response on the flat fire, so I thought Chief Thompson could give you just a brief update on what Medford's participation in that looked like.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Eric Thompson, your Fire Chief. On August 22nd, the flat fire, we received a request from the Oregon State Fire Marshal to provide assistance. The flat fires, it was about four miles outside of Sisters in Jefferson County. Very fast-moving wildfire with thousands of structures being threatened. So of course, we answered the call. We, the department was able to provide support to the incident management team, helping with the overall management of the incident. We did that for almost eight days. And also, we provided response with a brush engine that was part of a Rogue Valley Task Force. And so your firefighters, they helped protect structures. There was, in total, I believe there was 11 structures that were lost. There was over 3,000 folks that were in some form of evacuation. And so they spent over a week with going around and doing structural protection. Not only do they do structure protection, but they also went to areas where the fire had not reached yet and started prepping those areas to protect those homes. So all in all, very proud of the fact that none of our folks were injured, none of our equipment was damaged. The service to our local community was not interrupted, and so that was seamless. And you know, if you recall, we received a grant from the Oregon State Fire Marshal this year to help us upstaff. Well, this grant helped us during that period to offer aid to others and also provide good protection at home. Overall, there was 89 agencies across the state who helped with the flat fire. So the folks came home Monday afternoon, they were tired, they were dirty, but they still had smiles on their face and good spirits. So my pleasure to be able to provide the update. Thank you.
One thing the chief left out was Deputy Chief Chris Howard was part of the command staff for the fire. So we played a prominent role, not just with boots on the ground, but also with command of the incident, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. I see no questions. We will move on to not recognitions and community reports, but oral requests and communications from the audience. City Council sets aside 30 minutes for in-person public comments. Comments are limited to two minutes per person or organization. As outlined in the agenda, the public may also submit written comments to the council. Winnie, were there any written comments?
Yes, Your Honor, we received one written comment for tonight's meeting. Kathy Arnold submitted comments regarding recent utility fee changes. Her comments were submitted to the mayor, the city council, and appropriate staff. Comments are also available on the city's website. There were no other written comments received for Agenda Item 40.
Thank you. So before hearing public comments, I'd like to note the decorum policy for the council chambers. The use of noise makers or disruptive audience behavior such as applause, cheering, or shouting is not permitted. Decorum violations are time-consuming and disrespectful to the speaker and all attendees. Failure to follow the basic standards of decorum may result in removal from the meeting. Finally, I'd like to emphasize that this is your opportunity to provide comments to the council and is not intended to be a time for questions and answers. If you've completed a public comment form, please come to the front of the room when your name is called. The time is 6:07. Winnie?
So we have quite a few tonight, Mayor. I'm going to call three forward. Gary DiGarmo, Kathy Arnold, and Cynthia Cornish.
Yeah, come on up to the front with the microphone. Go ahead and introduce yourself and provide us with your information.
Good evening. I'm Gary DiGarmo, and I live here in the city. I'm here to talk about the $3 surcharge that the city has put on. If you don't, I'm guessing don't have a computer, home computer, which I don't, and really don't want to. But I did go down to Costco, and they're 500 to 550, and they're all wireless, so I'd have to get somebody to come do that for me and pay them. At any rate, I did call the city and asked about other options I might have. Prepay the bill. They can't do that. Has to be this computer thing that's shown here on the billing. $3 seems like a lot today to bill you each month extra with all the automation and everything that goes on. She also, the lady I talked to at the city, did suggest that, well, I could go down to the public library and use, I guess they have computers down there. I don't know. I'm not computer literate, as I said, and really don't care to be, and I don't. Anyway, I think $3 is out of line to receive a bill. Thank you.
Thank you. See, we have Kathy.
Excuse me, my watch just came loose. I am also here to talk about the city utility bill. I too think that the $3 charge is just outrageous to receive a bill. Medford Water doesn't charge us, is that on the agenda next? But those of us who do not do stuff on our computers, it's very difficult just to sign up for it. Took me over half an hour. So I think it's wrong. I don't think we should have to pay to get a bill. And when you do go online, they send you an email, but the email just tells you that your bill is online. You have to go find it. So then, in order to have it in hand, you have to have a printer, which I don't personally have a printer. So I think that's wrong. And I also wanted to mention on public forum that on my personal household accounting, I've kept track. And since 2013 to today, in the month of August alone, my city utility bill has went up 240%. I think that's a lot in that small of an amount of time. And also, I have some notes here, sorry. Calling it the utility bill is an irritation to me, and I don't know about other people, but the only item of the items on the bill is simply the sewer bill. All the other items are either departments, so fees raised to run the departments, or it's for capital improvements that we used to vote on. We used to vote on these to tell the city council whether we wanted these things or not. And that procedure seems to have come to a stop. And I think it's wrong. I think we need to go back to voting on it, and then those items would end up on our property tax statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia?
I'm, good evening. I'm Cynthia Cornish. I'm a homeowner in Medford. I'm in Ward Number Two. I moved here in the mid-'90s, and I also disagree with the $3 increase to enroll in paperless billing, but I also disagree with the $8.62 increase that was voted on by this committee. It's hard to manage when you are on a set income, because I am on a set income. It's hard to manage that much, the $8.62 increase. My elderly friends are on a fixed income. They do not have computers, and they cannot afford that increase or set up paperless billing for a $3 expense. So please remove the $3 expense and also the $8.62 increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next group, Winnie?
I'm Christine Lochner, Chris Turner, and Jack Rame.
I just handed him my cellphone. This is what my backyard looks like in most days in the wintertime. The people behind me and the people next to them both have wood stoves. They burn them 24/7, and they do have gas heating available in their houses. One of the houses just sold. The listing agent actually mentioned in the listing that there's a wood stove so they can save on their gas prices. I have no idea whether this is a certified gas stove or not. I can tell you, I know one isn't. I'm pretty sure the other isn't either, because there's smoke coming out of them all day long, all night long. So there is a city ordinance. I'm shocked that no realtors know about this, no mortgage companies, no home inspectors. A non-certified wood stove has to be removed before a house can be sold. Now, the one that was just sold is 509 Berry Circle. And when I did go to the city and to file a complaint and ask Officer Susie, and she said, "Well, go in the house and see if there's a label on the back of the stove." Not my job. And so do we get people to come and look? No answers?
In general, this is not an engagement and discussion. However, I'll let you know, we've got your information. You filled it out. We'll reply back to you and give you, in writing, back to you options that you have.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks for coming. Chris?
Good evening. My name is Chris Turner. I'm a Medford resident, and this is regarding the proposal to be acquired by the Emeralds. To set the stage, I'd like to state that this year alone, I've been to baseball games from Medford to Minneapolis, San Francisco to St. Louis, and more. I'm a fan, but the Emeralds in Medford is a colossal mistake. At the slick sales pitch the team made, one of you had the insight to ask Eugene why they didn't keep the team. Short answer, they couldn't raise the money. Why should we? And rebuild our downtown around it? Don't compare the success of such a plan in cities like Houston, over 2 million people, or San Antonio, a million and a half, to us. We're nothing like them and don't want to be. Time-wise, this is also misguided. Even the Emeralds estimate over two and a half years from design to completion. Ask the Holly about setbacks and overruns. Their updates took 12 years, and they already had the land and the building. By the way, it's not until about page 418 in the agenda that a resident indicates any desire for another sports venue. Furthermore, at least one council member believes that we don't have a good relationship with the county as it applies to the expo. Creating competition for events is not going to make that better. Please don't go forward with this. Not here, not now.
Thank you. Jack?
Hello, my name's Jack Ramey. I'm a resident of Medford. I spoke last meeting about Medford's handling an assault on my wife in the investigation. Chief Ivers took one of my reports, advised me that he or somebody from his department would contact me the next day. After not receiving any contact from Medford PD, my wife tried to file a criminal complaint case. Medford PD established that the officer, the original officer who demeaned, humiliated, and violated my wife's civil rights was the one to do this. He showed to be incompetent at the time. Just wanted to let the city council and the mayor know that Medford PD's handling of this matter is exposing the city of Medford to some significant liabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Winnie?
So we have three more. Mike Miles, Clarence Carr, and Bill Dames.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Mike Miles, 1203 North Riverside Avenue is my mailing address. Regards to a tenant I had, came down, food truck, and the $900 family's going to get. I wish that money is going to go to my daughter at OSU. In fact, most of my money's been going to OSU. There's some grounds there. Anyway, he came, he had a 24-foot trailer, and he said no. And so I asked him to write this. "I am terminating my lease. The city of Medford would not permit me to operate within city limits with a food truck longer than 20 feet." I gave him back his money, I wished him the best. I apologized. I said, "I didn't know that 20-foot was the limit." Going around town, out here on Main Street, where there's Blackbird, and then there's Jerry Queen, and then there's Car Wash, there's a 28-foot food trailer. Why the inconsistency? Please. This man was Hispanic. We kind of understood. I said, "Rules are rules, except in America, it tends to be that way." That's because I'm just asking for consistency, play by the rules. Talked to Sam, he says they're just understaffed right now, but I wanted to bring it to you. I think there's due diligence that can go on here, but I think that mockery, especially among Hispanic population too, cynicism, and we sure don't need cynicism in government. And I appreciate a little due diligence. Thank you very much. And I do have his contract saying that he's going to start in April for $900. I can verify everything. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Go Beavs. Clarence?
Hi, Clarence Carr. I'm just here, I filed a petition with the city of Medford just now. She has it, so hopefully it gets passed around to all of you to seek an investigation into Medford Police Department. Eric Mitten is very aware of this. The police came and illegally took my daughter and my three boys. There's no, nothing on the orders. They're completely blank. Judge Greer is refusing to correct it. Eric Mitten is refusing to correct it. We started a global resolution to end this, and then he just backed out of it. So that's already an admission that there's an issue here. So I put it forward to you guys, to ask you guys. This all falls on the city. It all started with a Medford municipal code. I got arrested at my private residence, in my home, for interfering with the police in my private residence, not in the city. That's illegal already from the beginning. So it's not even a question of, was this illegal? I walked two years down, going through hell to get my kids back. Jackson County sheriffs took over four vehicles, took numerous cars. I came and asked you guys to intervene. He still took the money, extorted me out of money. I have it recorded and everything. I told the sheriffs and the judge, "This is extortion." They still went along with it. Eric Mitten already agreed, there's no eternal agreement between you and the sheriffs. So therefore, it shows you that everything they did is illegal. There's not one with you in the courts. Therefore, everything is illegal, especially when you're a sovereign city, especially underneath Oregon Constitution, Article 2, Section 2. That made you guys in full control over the police, in control of all traffic violations, in control of everything. You're sovereign, and this is your duty to correct it, or you guys can all be liable to.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Dames, I live at 2337 Kona Circle, Medford. I'm in the Medford Lions Club. In 1930, we gave 200 acres to the city for Prescott Park. Prescott was in the Medford Lions. And one of the stipulations in that deed was that the park would revert to the Lions if it was ever stopped being used as a park. And several years later, we did the same thing for this place called Hawthorne Park. Gave to the city, and with the stipulation that if it's ever not used as a park, it reverts to the Lions. Ball field owned by some other people, pretty questionable about, but I suggest you check this out. You can call me if you like. you, check this out, uh, and call me if you like. And, uh, I've talked to the park director. He's aware of this and prob, if he hasn't advised you, but he should have advised you by now. But anyway, that's the long and short of it.
Thank you. Winnie, are we through our list? All right, we will move on to approval or correction of the August 20th, 25 minutes. I understand that Councilor West has a proposed amendment to the August 6th minutes for consideration.
Yes, indeed, I do. It looks like we are not doing a good job reading our minutes. Uh, so I found a mistake in the minutes from August 6th that we adopted. Um, Section 30.3 says, "On-track update, Summer Walcott and Jill Jeter reported that..." dot, dot, dot. Um, so I would like to amend that. And so, I moved to amend the August 6th minute, Section 30.3, to say, uh, Jill Jeter reported on the success of the partnership of On-track and the city of Medford School District, uh, for the substance intervention program funded by the city. Kristi Wilson reported on her work as a certified drug and alcohol counselor.
Second. All right, so how about we just do this real fast? Is all in favor of, of the meeting minute revision? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that is the amendment. How about for August 20th? Got anything there?
I read it today and know I have no minutes.
All right, excellent. Um, anyone else? Seeing none, the minutes will stand as, um, presented. Moving on to consent calendar, which we do not have, um, any items on the consent calendar. We'll go straight to ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Mitten?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 80.1 is Council Bill 2025-72. A resolution authorizing and approving nine council community initiative fund allocations totaling $561,750.
All right, anyone like staff report?
I have a motion, but I don't need a report.
All right, let's hear it.
One of the things that was not, uh, initially approved was $50,000 for the So Humane Shelter that they're building in North Medford. That was something that Counselor Smith and I sought, and, uh, I'm gonna move to amend the, uh, list of, uh, items we're granting to add that $50,000.
Okay, I don't wanna get too picky, but can we make that as a motion and not an amendment?
So moved.
Yes, Mr. Mitten?
So, Judge, just wanted to reset the, the procedural. So, the motion is to approve the resolution with that addition to it?
Sure.
Okay. And we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Would you like to speak to that?
It, it, I think that it's a great return on equity. We're getting, uh, 50%, uh, an $11 million project that we're contributing $50,000 to. It's gonna save lots of lives. It's gonna supplement the resources we have for animals in this city. Right now, the county shelter is very much underpowered, I'll say. The current So Humane facility is very, very, very much outgrown. They've already got half of the funding. They've got the CUP from planning. Um, they're ready to go. They just need the funding. This is not designed to forgive SDCs, but it is a, a fact that ultimately, they will, upon completion of the project, be paying us SDCs. So, essentially, it's not a, it's not a forgiving of SDCs, but in effect, that money's going to come right back to the city in the form of SDCs. So, we're really not giving them anything to create a privately funded $11 million facility. I think that's the least we can do.
Mr. Carr?
So, this is a tough one for me because I actually really appreciate the mission of So Humane and, and I've personally contributed to So Humane, um, but I just do not feel like this is a good use of CCIF dollars. Um, you know, we're contributing to a project that isn't fully funded and, um, it, I mean, there are just a lot of concerns that I have around the way that we've used that money and, and the kind of things that we can do for it. I understand that we don't have additional funds at this time. Uh, I mean, sorry, we have, we don't have additional projects to give money to at this time. And, uh, you know, given what I understand about this project, I feel like if at the end of the year, as we look at what we're gonna do with money, if we have money left over, I, I don't have a problem with us, um, putting money into this kind of construction. Hopefully, we'd be a little bit more funded and have a better timeline for that. But this, to me, is just not a good use of CCIF dollars and considering the scale of the project and, and the contribution to it.
But with respect to the scale, I would say...
Whoa, 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 whoa. Anyone else? Kevin?
Uh, yeah, I've thought about this a lot. Um, my, my thought is when, you know, we do have some leftover money and there might be something that we funded that does not use some of the funding as well, and because of that, we'll still have, uh, funding left over as we move throughout the year if something up, happens to come up. Uh, so for that reason, um, I, I don't necessarily disagree with, uh, Mr. Carr, but I do think there is something to, uh, the goodwill of council members for people that didn't bring up things that are good for the community. Um, and so, for that reason and others, I will be supportive.
Mr. Quinn?
As far as it not being material, I mean, a lot of the things we've, as far as the totality of the problem, a lot of things we've been addressing through CCIF funds are essentially a drop in the bucket of the problem we're trying to address. Fostering young people engaging in sporting activities. Well, huh, we funded scholarships for this, uh, for swimming. That's a tiny number of the people, the young people in Medford. We've fostered, um, preschool scholarships. Well, that's a small number of the people who need preschool in Medford. So, the smallness of the contribution relative to the largeness of the need, I don't think obtains, and if it does obtain, there's problems with several other things that several other people have endorsed. And I don't intend to poke any, express any negativity towards those things. I support those things, but I just don't think it's an analysis that obtains. As far as timeline, well, timeline, what does that mean? When are we going to have all of our preschoolers educated? Well, never, but are we, uh, will there always be more preschoolers to educate? That's a project that will never, ever end, not in '26, not in '27, not in '50. But we still contributed to preschool scholarships. When will all of our youngsters know how to swim? Probably never, and we'll have new, new children to teach. Does that mean we don't do something now? No. So, I don't think the, "It takes too long to solve the whole problem" analysis obtains because we've put money against things that will never be fixed, and we're just doing the best we can to fix them as we can. And so, both of those reasons, respectfully, I, I don't think if we extend the logic completely makes sense. So, I continue to support what I'm moving.
Anyone else? Yeah, Ms. Ayers?
So, I think, um, this is a need and because we do have funding left over, um, that we have not allocated so far, I will be supportive of this request.
So, I, perhaps I should have been more specific in my comments about why I didn't feel like this is a good CCIF fit. The, the issue is that capital funding is something that is in general much more readily accessible than services funding. The problem that we have seen time and time again, especially with the delivery of homeless services, is finding ongoing dollars to provide services. What CCIF, in my opinion, excels at is when we can backfill holes in service providers in terms of helping them expand their service or get that service farther across the line. Uh, yes, a lot of what we do here is a small drop in the bucket in terms of trying to solve large problems, but what we have done consistently with CCIF dollars is funding services. It was a large conversation in this council when we'd made the decision to put CCIF dollars towards the capital construction of a fire station. Uh, in my opinion, I think that was a good use of dollars, but it was a good use of dollars because the traditional alternative to putting CCIF dollars into that fire station was to raise our, uh, utility fee higher. And from that perspective, my goal was not to raise the utility fee, knowing how much is already on the docket, uh, for Medford residents. So, from that perspective, in terms of services rather than capital expenses, that's sort of where I think CCIF dollars shine, and that's sort of why I feel like So Humane, this particular project, is less than an ideal fit. Now, would I support the use of these dollars for So Humane in terms of a services project? Absolutely. Again, I think So Humane does wonderful work. Have, having personally donated to So Humane, I will continue to do so. Thank you.
All right, plenty of, uh, information out there. Anyone? Mr. Quinn?
Well, with respect to the distinction between services and capital expenditure, this request is $50,000. We are spending $30,000 in the same CCIF grant, which no one's gonna object to, including me, for flagpoles, lights, and wallpaper, which is construction, not a service. So, I don't know that that's a distinction that actually exists at all, nor is it one with a difference.
All right. Council, anyone else have anything that they wanna add? Had plenty of, of, of information here, but we got stuff we gotta add. Mr. Curlinger?
Does anyone remember what the timeline is for breaking ground?
It's not really breaking ground, but it's, I figure they're targeting being done, and let me double-check.
Here, my, my pause on it is a tough one, cause if you don't, to give money to So Humane, then you're voting for killing puppies. So, I mean, I, I contribute, I'm being a little facetious. I contribute to So Humane. I'm gonna continue to do so, and I actually think this is funds that would be a great contribution. My concern is, I think the day they made this request was the first day they accidentally announced their public fundraising campaign. So, of the 11 million, they're at very, very little, and we're probably likely years out from this being realized, and I want to see it done, and I'll get behind fundraising efforts. But I'm curious if contributing $50,000 from our 2025 CCIF funds towards a project that's gonna be done probably in 2029 really makes a whole heck of a lot of sense.
I believe Ms. Evans told us she already had half the funding, even though she hadn't publicly announced the project, and if the CCIF application Mr. Smith prepared says May of '27 is the completion.
May of '27 for completion?
Correct, which is going to be definitely sooner than the ball stadium. And no dogs will die if we don't get the stadium.
Kevin?
Uh, I would like to speak positive on, on a lot of the things that are in here. Um, you know, I, I think KJ, who's up in the audience, does a great job of, of putting out the things that we'd be able to do with these dollars. Um, you know, when we look at the preschool scholarships, when we work with our sister cities, um, consumer credit counseling, a lot of people in the audience today making sure that their good projects are, uh, getting funded and they're available if, if people happen to have questions. Um, you know, these are, these are funds that it's very important to put into the community. Um, and, and we get a positive impact from that, right? These are the rare amount of dollars that the council can decide how they get used. We have nine different people here. We might have nine different ideas of how exactly we would wanna individually spend, uh, this money, but I think coming together and, and having those, uh, discussions of like, "Well, maybe it's not my top thing, but it's important to you." Uh, I think that's just good, um, that's just a good part of being a, a council member. That doesn't mean that every idea is a great idea. There has been times that things have been brought up before the council that we did not fund. Um, but I, I hope that, uh, as a council, we, while I understand the concerns that people have, I think it's, it's good overall if we kinda come together on this and accept the, uh, motion as is. Thank you.
Okay. Winnie, would you call the rule, please?
John Quinn?
Yes?
Zach Smith?
Yes.
Kevin Stein?
Yes.
Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
Nick Carr?
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yes.
Garrett West?
Yes.
And Mike Curlinger?
Yes.
We have eight yes.
All right, motion passes. You know, thank goodness, because if it had failed, I wasn't quite sure what we were gonna do there, because that would have killed the whole, uh, the whole agenda item there, right? Could we just get a reset? Do we get Ctrl+Alt+Delete? Is that how that works?
So, if, if the motion fails and we wait for another motion, it doesn't mean that the agenda item goes away.
Phew. All right, 80.2, sir.
Can, can I ask a question? For what?
All right. Uh, Your Honor, item 80.2 is Council Bill 2025-73. Resolution authorizing and approving an update of the city of Medford's Vision Implementation Committee structure.
All right, staff report?
Yes.
Yes, request for a staff report.
Good evening, may and council. Christina Wilson, your Communications and Government Relations Director, here to talk to you tonight about the proposed VIC implementation committee updates. Little background, the Vision Implementation Committee is, was formed from the approval of the Medford 2040 Vision and Action Plan. Um, that was approved in 2021, and the committee was formed in 2022 following that. Uh, this group ensures that Medford 2040 is moving forward. Uh, it encompasses, let's go ahead and, it encompasses, uh, two public, two currently, two public-at-large chairs, um, and a number, so over 20 lead partners are part of this group, as well as the other members you see there on the list, including, um, ward representatives, one from each ward. The proposed adjustments are to take the public-at-large chair to one instead of two and bring the lead partner seats to three, which would encompass, uh, the, the top three with the most action items. Not to say that other lead partners would not be part of this process. They'd be invited to every single meeting. They'd be asked to participate in the meetings with providing updates, um, but the lead partner seats just kinda bring, it narrows in the group a little bit more. Um, and then we would continue to have two committee-at-large positions, um, the ward positions, Latino AX community member liaison as well, coming to a total of 12 committee members. So, part of this is to kinda refocus the group. Um, it's been five years since we've gone through this process and trying to bring everyone back and making sure that we're all on the same page with a, a goal of moving forward. Um, and we're going to be inviting all the lead partners, putting a schedule together to invite them to come and report on their action item, um, or multiple action items. Hopefully, we'll, with this move, we'll be also improving efficiency, um, and enhancing the overall impact of the plan itself. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Carr?
I just wanna make a comment, because I've been involved as the VIC liaison for the last couple of years, and, uh, a lot of this has been stuff that I've been working with KJ and Christina, who was our past chair with VIC. And one of the things that, uh, sort of drove a lot of this, um, is that the transition from the Medford 2040 Vision Committee to the Vision Implementation Committee, that was something that, in my opinion, didn't quite happen exactly the way we expected it to happen. And what ended up is VIC became more of 2040 Action Plan Plus-Plus as opposed to Implementation. And so, one of the things that we've been having conversations about is how do we try to refine and refocus? And one of the biggest challenges, as I'm sure we all are aware, when you have a giant committee made up of dozens of members, it's difficult to focus the committee, to have a direct goal, to, I mean, our meetings were scheduled as two hours and they would run to three. I'm actually looking around the room and I see another Vision Implementation Committee member who's here, who can, he's nodding along in attestation of the length of our meetings. And so, the, the idea is here really trying to focus that. Our goal with VIC has been to produce annual reports for council that really help council understand the state of the 2040 plan and what it is that council need, or that, what it is that our community needs from council to continue moving that plan forward. One of the things that, uh, has not been happening is that kind of a deliverable. Uh, we've spent a lot of time talking about the strengths and weaknesses of the plan. We are not engaged a lot on how does council and how can the city, more than just the city's role as a lead partner on things, but how can the city ensure the continuity and consistency of this plan? And so, reaching that five-year mark, it's time for us to think about things a little differently, and that is what you see before you today. Thank you.
Any, um, questions? Any questions? Yes, Kevin?
Just so you know, there's at least two members of the VIC here in the audience.
Oh, Martin. I see Martin.
There we go. And just know, if you vote against this, you're booting her off of the voting member.
No, she's a ward rep.
No, she's a ward rep.
Isn't that the one going away?
No.
No.
Hang on.
The ward reps are the ones staying.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you're booting other people. That's fine, then. We're just talking about the negative stuff, the John, talking about killing dogs and stuff. Oh, sorry, I can't keep it straight. So, I like, I mean, no matter what, regardless of the way any of this stuff puts together, is it effective and how does this move forward? I don't, I mean, I don't know if reducing the membership, the voting membership, is really the key driver on things. Maybe it helps get there. It's just, I, maybe I need help understanding it, but maybe this is just the main thing that needs to happen in order to get there. I, you know, as the only person besides the current mayor that was around when we formed this thing, maybe I had greater aspirations of how this would be helpful to the city. So, I mean, I guess I'll ask, when's the next update? Like, when is, how often are the meetings? Are this monthly? Is this quarterly?
The plan is monthly, and it has been quarterly in the past. We tried to accelerate it, but it became unwieldy. And so we've been off for, it's probably about six months since we've had a meeting?
The last meeting was in April.
So, not quite.
Wow.
So, yeah. And so this is all part and parcel of trying to, there are other things that are going on in terms of how we're structuring agendas and some other stuff to try to keep VIC moving forward, but that doesn't actually require any council action. So, this membership piece does. The other piece of this, too, is this is also bringing VIC membership into alignment with the rest of our, like, committees. And so, VIC membership is totally separate as far as it exists right now under the rules for the city. This makes it the same. So, that's another important piece of this.
When it says City of Medford/Mura, who are the, it says lead agencies, right? So the three lead partners, one of them's us, one of them's Chamber/Travel Medford, one of them's So Ready. So is the City of Medford our ward liaison, or is that another person that we're putting on there?
We have the city manager on the VIC. And that's who's representing the city as well as a council liaison.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But also just to note is that, kind of, Nick touched on this, is when the VIC was created as part of the approval of the plan, that was off time of when boards and commissions were happening. So it's kind of lived in its own little world out here instead of being encompassed into all of our boards and commissions. So part of this is trying to bring it back in and structure, and I know Winnie would really appreciate that.
Mr. Kurlinger? Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. Mr. Card with the motion, West with the second. Any discussion, or do you handle that? Yep. Winnie, will you call the roll?
Nick Card?
Yes.
Garrett West?
Yes.
John Quinn?
I would rather be last, but yes.
Kevin Stein?
Still thinking.
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yes.
Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
And Zach Smith?
Yes.
We have eight yess.
All right. That passed, I guess. A little bit of a interesting.
It passed.
It passed. Okay. Just want to make sure that the hesitation on the yes does not constitute some sort of.
No, we live in a transcript world. A yes is a yes, no matter the intonation.
Fair. Good. Okay. Public hearings. Before the public hearings, I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of decorum previously outlined are still applicable. Violation of the decorum policy may result in your removal from the chambers. This evening, we have one request to continue a land use legislative hearing and one administrative hearing. If you'd like to speak during this hearing, please complete a blue public comment form to be called forward. Comments for administrative legislative hearings are limited to four minutes per individual group organization. 90.1?
Thank you, Your Honor. 90.1 is a request for continuance, an ordinance approving an amendment to the Medford Comprehensive Plan to adopt the downtown plan into the neighborhood element of the Comprehensive Plan.
This is on slate to be continued. However, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this matter that came here to testify? We'll either, we can either come back, or we can do it tonight, no problem. Or come back to, did I say come back tonight? Boy, that's what got him coming down here. Okay, so we are going to have someone speak? What? Yeah, I know. I gotta open the public hearing. Yeah?
Yes, if, and Mr. McManus, we are going to have a study session on this next week, and then it would come back for a public hearing before adoption. But if you'd like to speak tonight, we can go ahead and open the public hearing.
I'm seeing the nod. Yes. So, additional information will be right on October 1st when you're going to speak. So, where am I at? Okay. Before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for staff? None. All right. I will open this public hearing for anyone who is unavailable on October 1st, 2025. Please come forward. State your name for the record.
Good evening. EJ McManus. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and everyone in the audience. Yeah, I know this is a continuance. I just didn't know if I would be making it on the October agenda. Bottom line is, I do hope that when it does come forward to the council, you guys do consider moving forward. This was presented to the Planning Commission, and I guess I should disclose, I am an appointed Planning Commissioner. On August 14th, there was a tie vote, so there was no recommendation from the commission. But I do hope that when it does come, I do want to note that in the audience, there was community leaders and stakeholders that showed support of the plan. I know that, it was interesting to review it. You know, obviously, the Public Advisory Committee and staff have been really working on this diligently since '24. But, you know, not having a comprehensive plan over the last 20 years, I think is pretty significant, especially when this is a legal document that would help with the implementation of making sure that there's some long-range policies in place. And the past mayor, Gary Wheeler, made an interesting comment that kind of resonated with me. He said that, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm nervous, because I see you guys too much, but maybe, hopefully, I don't say anything risque. But he did say, you know, dare to fail. And I think not having a comprehensive plan would be the risk if there is not something in place. I think that the city has been very aspirational to look at the city to move forward. And in my experience, when there isn't a framework, it is challenging to make a signal to not just visitors to invest in our community, but the local community. And I think this is part of the elements. So I do appreciate that the staff have really worked on this, especially with public input. And so, in the spirit of what Mayor Wheeler had previously said, I would just say, you know, be curious and dare to thrive. Dare to make Medford shine. And I think that's why you all have been appointed. And maybe Southern Oregon Humane Society would be a part of that downtown master plan, or, you know, of any sort. So that's the only comment I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that allowed here?
EJ?
EJ? Sorry, Annie. So, wait, sorry. You said the Planning Commission tied vote on this?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we didn't have a full commission at that evening, so it ended up being a tied vote. And I think procedurally, the motion just.
Yeah, a tie is a fail.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, this is obviously a very large document. Are you fighting over small pieces of it, or are you fighting over large pieces of this, or?
I don't know if I'm fighting. I think that, you know, with every vision of trying to move something forward, I see this as an implementation plan, is everything crossed off of making sure that the funding and all resources in place, you know, to be determined, it's actually noted in the plan if funding is available. So I would say, in the holistic component of it, to help support all the other initiatives, that's what I'm in support of.
Okay. Thank you.
I will be here October 1st, but I'm Annie Jenkins from the Downtown Medford Association. I was at that Planning Commission meeting. I did speak on behalf of Downtown Master Plan. We sat on that plan for 18 months and worked on it. Some of those meetings were hard, some of those meetings were weird and strange, but we got through a great process. I think if we do not have these aspirational goals, we're not going to move forward. We have to figure out how we, as a community, come together to make Medford and downtown Medford the best we all want to see it made. And I can't tell you how many of those people that said no that night have ever even been to our downtown, honestly, and walked the streets and really understood what we have in our downtown and the gem that we do have. And so with that, I really hope you guys take this plan and understand it is all about aspirations. And we don't have to have set dollars. The Planning Commission has worked hard. Carla has worked day and night on this plan. And I really, truly think that it's something that we need to invest in and look at. And we will figure out how to make it work.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I'm just going to check with you. I'm going to close the public hearing, but we'll reopen it later. No, we're just going to leave it open?
I think the general preference in the planning world is to leave the hearing open and move to continue with an open hearing.
Okay. I'm going to leave the hearing open and move and accept the motion for continuing.
I move to continue this matter to October 1st, 2025.
Second. Second by Kurlinger. Easy enough. Winnie, will you call the roll?
Nick Card?
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
John Quinn?
Yes.
Garrett West?
Yes.
Zach Smith?
Yes.
Kevin Stein?
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yes.
And Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
We have eight yess.
All right. Motion carries. 90.2?
All right. 90.2 is Council Bill 2025-74, Resolution Adopting the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or CAPR, pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, for the 2024-2025 program year.
Thank you. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening. It's Michelle King, your Planning Director, and this, tonight is your 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Evaluation Report, called CAPR. The objective tonight is to have a public hearing, and to present some highlights from the annual report, to solicit some citizen participation, and to request council's approval of a resolution adopting the CAPR for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The first two required meetings was held by the Housing and Community Development Commission on August 13th, in which the commission approved the CAPR for presentation to the council. And tonight's public hearing marks the end of the 30-day public review period to solicit feedback. The comment period began August 3rd, and we hope to submit the report to HUD subsequent to your approval. So just a reminder that the CAPR represents one year of five, and the five-year plan for these federal funds is called the Consolidated Plan, and it has five goals. All of the funds spent through CDBG and these federal funds have to be spent along the guided goals and priority established by the five-year plan. The CAPR represents one year of the plan, and we are in the final year of the current consolidated plan and have got to work on the next plan, which will be for the period of 2025 to 2029. These goals above play into the reporting process, and the CAPR report is very formulaic. It is a very narrow set of information that you need to present in order to meet the CAPR requirements. The categories of the CAPR include this list, and I'm going to highlight a couple of them for you tonight. And the program year that we're talking about covers July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2025. So one of the first and main categories of the CAPR report is the resources and investments. And just a reminder that 100% of the expenditures of these funds needs to be spent on low and moderate income persons and households. For the year itself, the program year, there were $687,000 roughly to be, that were allocated under the categories of public services, public facilities, general administration, acquisition, economic development, and housing. And the percentages are based on council priorities. There are two categories that have caps of percentages, and those are public services. They cannot exceed 15%, and 20% is allowed for program administration and planning. We are under both caps for this program year. So this is a revised version of a very confusing table that exists in the CAPR, and thank you for those that asked questions about it, because there were lots of asterisks that didn't really make sense when you looked at the table. So basically, this shows you the resources and investments for the program year. There's two categories in this year. We had the CDBG funding and the resources made available that are in the first column here of over 1.2 million are, represent resources from multiple program years. So this is what was available at the beginning of this program year. And the amount spent, what was, is not cumulative. It was what was spent in this program year. And it's a large amount spent in this program year, because we had a lot of projects and providers that were making their way through environmental review or had other delays due to construction. And so we were able to spend down the balance significantly in this last year by really working with our partners to get those projects completed. The other category is CDBGCV, which was COVID funding, and it was a one-year allocation, although paid out over several years. It was really just one year of allocation. It isn't a rolling fund. And the resources made available from the CDBGCV were about a little under $1 million. And amounts spent during the years after this allocation are about $826,000. The remaining funds have already been allocated. They're going to be spent on the Santos Community Center. And if there are any additional funds that are left over, they will be used for some paving projects at the crossings. So one of the things that the CAPR asks for is to demonstrate how your community partners are leveraging funds to spend the CDBG federal funding. We had lots of leveraging in Medford. We have really good performance of $4.3 million. This is really larger than expected, because Rogue Retreat received over $3 million grant from the state for Rogue Retreat. So, and as a summary of the key initiatives in this last year, there were some really significant projects, including the Navigation Center. And overall, the project spent about $900,000 of CDBG and CDBG CARES Act funding. And then the Columbia Care used about $331,000 to rehab 16 veteran occupied apartments and repair what windows, siding, paint, and gutters. We also had several other projects that served about 2,600 people that included Rogue Retreats, Kelly Shelter, the Maslow Project, and Salvation Army. So these charts are also a little bit confusing. So what the CAPR asks for is, at the beginning of the program year, they, when the city allocates the funding to our partners that are going to be providing these services or projects, we ask them how many people they're going to serve, and then we calculate at the end of the program year whether they're successful or not. So you can see that in categories one and two, we, category one, we're a little bit short, but that's because the Columbia Care Service Department served bit short, but that's because the Columbia Care Service Department served 16 units, and we'd build one ramp, so it was a little bit less than expected, but also, I think because of the way that the people service calculated. For the category two, we exceeded the number of people that were going to be served, and we had no goals for category three, and in category, and for goal four, we still expect to serve 3,800 people or over. We are still waiting for the final environmental approval for the Jackson Pool demolition revitalization and the Santo Community Center structural improvements. Goal five was an acquisition activity for goal 715, and the property was acquired, and we are, and construction is complete, and this project will close out. They do the same exercise for the five-year consolidated plan, and you can see here that in most goals, we've exceeded the expectation for the five-year plan. So I think we're, we're on target to meet the goals of the five-year plan, and we'll be setting new goals for the next five-year plan that's coming forward. Other actions that happened during the year that supported the goals of the CAPER was that this Medford Water received a $2.7 million grant for water and sewer infrastructure improvements from ARPA for Southwest Medford, which was just completed this summer and will serve the Housing Authority of Jacksonville County's Orchard Meadows Affordable Housing Project. We continue to implement the homeless system action plan. The ADU SDC reduction program was extended through June of 2027, it's been very successful and incentivizes naturally occurring affordable housing. The general fund grants that were approved, many of them supported essential safety net services, and both in the CLPTI and MPTI taxes exemption programs for nonprofit and multi-use, multifamily housing were approved and implemented in the last year. So the City Council approved the next consolidated plan on June 4th of this year, and the consolidated plan was then submitted to HUD in August. We are awaiting HUD's funding agreements for this plan, and we expect, accept, expect to present them to council for acceptance as soon as they're received. The funding agreements will be executed with each subrecipient that receives these funds for the next program year, and then the projects, programs will begin. As, just as a note as well, the Planning Department will be coming to council with the Housing Extravaganza on October 8th. This is a stated the housing for the city presentation, and staff will confirm at that study session the funding priorities for the upcoming grant season, the percentages of how this money will be allocated. So I have time for questions, but just as a preview, the staff recommendation is that you approve the resolution to adopt the 2024-25 CAPER for the submission to HUD.
Questions, Mr. Stein?
Can you go back to that slide that had the $2.7 million on it?
Yeah.
Received it from who?
ARPA, it's a federal grant for infrastructure improvements.
Like we used our own ARPA money from, that we received for this, or did we get it from somewhere else?
Yes.
This was specific to this project, this was not the general pot of ARPA money we got. This was, I'm trying to remember the exact amount, but this, this was a separate award of ARPA dollars from the state for this particular infrastructure project in Southwest Medford. Matt Brinkley was involved, so I'm trying to jump into-
Yeah, I saw the end of the project, so it was specifically for this West Medford Water and Sewer Infrastructure on old, on stage, old stage. So yeah, so it's very specific, and it was for, just for this project.
Right, because we had our own pot of money, and then county had their own money, and the state got their own money, and then the state allocated a certain way for certain things. Now, do you remember the ask from the state? Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Keating?
Thank you. Is Columbia Care and the Royal Apartments, that's a nonprofit, I'm assuming, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, I'll just double check.
Other questions? Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject, please come forward as called, please identify yourself for the record before speaking, no one turned in, does, last chance? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion before moving to motion? Nope, take a motion. Mr. Stein?
I don't think I've done one today. I move to approve Council Bill 2025, Tax 74.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, Winnie, will you call the roll?
Kevin Stein.
Yes.
Nick Card.
Yes.
Kevin Keating.
Yes.
John Quinn.
Yes.
Garrett West.
Yes.
Zach Smith.
Yes.
Jessica Ayers.
Yes.
And Mike Curlinger.
Yes.
We have eight yes.
All right, motion passes, we are on to council business with a brief interlude here for, for public proclamations. It was really good timing for that Chief Thompson here, because both of these kind of tie into all the, you know, emergency service in particular and specific, you know, to, to the fire department, so it's kind of a, kind of a, I guess, a little bit of a treat to be able to share these on a day when we've kind of recognized how strong and productive the Medford Fire Department is. So whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history, and whereas September 11th, 2025 is the 24th anniversary of this tragic, tragic day. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas community organizations and family members of the September 11 victims began observing the anniversary as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas the Edward M. Kennedy Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21st, 2009, requested September 11th to be observed and recognized as an annual national day of service and remembrance, and charged the corporation for national and community service with leading this nationwide effort. And whereas participating in service and remembrance activities on September 11th is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service, and honor those who continue to serve our country today, including veterans, soldiers, military families, and first responders. Now therefore, I, Michael Zerzinski, Mayor of Medford, do hereby proclaim September 11th as a day of service and remembrance in the city of Medford, and urge all citizens to honor this observance. And then also, whereas emergency preparedness month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Medford to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas during this nationwide campaign, the city of Medford encourages citizens to help ensure the safety and well-being of their families, neighbors, and communities. And whereas household preparedness plans, including meeting points, extra emergency supplies, and emergency contact lifts, will help ensure you and your family are prepared for any emergency or disaster. And whereas receiving proper training for emergency situations, including first aid, CPR, the use of automatic external defibrillators, and participating in disaster and emergency training provide the ability to safely and effectively respond to an emergency. And whereas emergency preparedness is responsible for every citizen of Medford, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by following four simple steps. Prepare an emergency supply kit, create a family emergency plan, beware of the types of emergencies that can occur in Medford, and get involved with local preparedness organizations and efforts. Now therefore, I, Michael Zerzinski, Mayor of Medford, do hereby proclaim September as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Medford, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance and preparedness in our community. Mr. Card?
Thank you, Your Honor. On council officers today, there were five items on the agenda. First item, Mr. Mitten informed us that he is getting involved with a, is it, was it League of Cities, I'm sorry?
It, I don't think it has the League of Cities name attached, it's various other municipalities in the legislative workroom.
Various other municipalities in a legislative session to help draft better language on serial meetings. There's currently a, sort of a gap between what most municipalities interpret to be a serial meeting as, and between what-
OJAC.
OJAC, meaning?
Oregon Government Ethics Commission.
The Oregon Government Ethics Commission has recently been interpreting serial meetings to mean, and so Eric is involved in that effort to try to help remove the ambiguity and codify basically the standard municipal understanding of what a serial meeting is. How, how'd I do?
Excellent.
For catching the last 30 seconds of that conversation, yes. All right. Second item on the agenda, two-hour parking. Mr. Worth came to us. Staff is proposing that some or all of the one-hour spots in downtown will be converted to two-hour parking. This proposal will go to the Parking Committee as that gets evaluated, and Mr. Worth's intention is for this to happen pretty quickly, is that fair to say? Nod your head, yeah, he nodded his head, all right. And so there will be something that's going to the Parking Committee, and then that'll circle back to us. Any comments on that? Yes.
Has this been brought to the Downtown Medford Association for their input?
I, I just saw two hands shoot up in the air, so I think we just got some DMA input. But as part of the process that it'll go through, I would definitely encourage DMA to participate with the Parking Committee as this goes through and provide your feedback if you have an opinion.
I mean, the outreach needs to go to DMA, not necessarily DMA having to outreach to the city on this, that's my opinion.
All right.
Just like we do with other things, where we go and meet with all the planning people when we go and make planning code stuff, I think it makes perfect sense for the DMA, which we fund and entertain to talk about how they're, how they feel about it as well as an outside entity. Thank you.
I see Mr. Worth taking detailed notes in his head. Thumbs up, I love it. All right. Third item, staff intends to send a letter to Congressman Bentz concerning our WIFI loan for our wastewater treatment. Our WIFI loan has not yet closed. The White House has not closed a single WIFI loan this year, and our loan currently sits waiting for approval from the White House. Based on our conversations with the EPA when we were in DC, OMB is, I believe it was OMB, the Office of Management and Budget, all the acronyms, I'm trying to do better, somebody, Jessica criticized my use of all the acronyms, so I'm trying to do a better job. Yes, you did, you said, I have too many acronyms, and you're, you're totally correct. So, WIFI, the Water, Infrastructure Financing and Investment Act, so that loan, we're, staff is going to send a letter to Congressman Bentz, this is part of our existing legislative platform, Mr. Mitten?
I just want to clarify for you, you said a couple times staff would send a letter, the letter is drafted for mayor's signature.
Ah, the mayor's going to send a letter. Staff's drafting for the mayor's signature. All right, thank you for the clarity. Fourth item, DLCD, do we, did we get a copy of that?
Department of Land Conservation and Development.
What is it? Land, conservation and development? So many acronyms, I mean, it's crazy. Did, did we get a copy of this sent out to council?
It was on the back of-
Oh, I know, but it was on the back of council officers, but did the rest of councillors get it? Oh, okay, so, as, yeah, thank you, that's right. As part of the council officer's agenda, you would have seen a letter of support to the, for DLCD, for the Housing Plan Assistance Grant, or sorry, that's what we're asking for. Anyway, so what we're asking for, planning is asking for, is a grant from DLCD in order to help us fund, as I described it to Carla, ADUs and workforce housing in a box. And so basically, this is to help it, to create a toolkit to help us produce more middle housing and accessory dwelling units throughout the city, to help developers or individuals get through that process. And so this guide will help make it, make it easier for people who want to produce this kind of housing to do so. This is something that is a, it's a small grant amount, but in order to apply for the grant, they need council approval, and so we need to approve this letter. So I move to approve the letter as drafted from planning for the Housing Planning Assistance Grant application.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on the letter? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Letter's approved, Mr. Mayor, you may sign at your leisure. Fifth item on the agenda, the mayor has been involved with Bloomberg Foundation, involved in a whole bunch of different cool mayor training programs, and he's currently in the Bloomberg Harvard Leadership Program, did I say that right?
City Leadership.
City Leadership Program, City Leadership Program. And so Mike's been working on, so there's a priority, and so the priority that he's been involved in is around homelessness. This project is actually not just a, hey, Mike attends a few meetings, and then he knows about homelessness, and we're all good to go, it's actually a much more involved project that will involve some staff time. And so because, depending on whose estimate you get, we're talking hundreds of hours of staff time here, we've asked, we discussed in officers to have Mike and Rob provide a brief presentation to us as part of our next study session, so we have some more detail on this, and then that way we can make an informed motion to direct staff to either participate in this process, because we are talking about hundreds of hours of staff time, or to tell Mike, enjoy working all of these hundreds of hours yourself. So that concludes council officers. Committee and commission reports, anyone have any committee or commission reports? Zach?
So I went to the RV COG meeting, and there was a research group from U of O called the Oregon Hazards Lab doing a presentation about the wildfire cameras that have been set up, so far there's four, after the Alameda fires, FEMA had approved 12 cameras in total, and there's four up, which there's one in Phoenix, Central Point, Eagle Point, and Jacksonville. And typically, they're installed above water towers, but it's a really cool system, AI actually monitors it, and if it, you know, detects smoke or flames at night, then it sends it to two different people, and so before the public is notified about these fires, it's vetted by two actual humans. And I, I was hoping, John, maybe you could help me on the second half of that meeting, where they were talking about the property that was voted on?
Yeah, RV COG voted to-
What does that mean? RV?
Rogue Valley Council of Governments.
Thanks, John.
We voted unanimously, and it was chaired by someone who was just awful, right, Zach? That we would buy the Central Point Public Works Building for $1,500,000, I believe it is, which is actually a very good deal. There's still more questions to be answered, but it's a good step towards finding a new home for the Food and Friends Program for feeding elders and getting food out to them. So it was a good, good step, good meeting.
Great. Any other committee or commission reports?
This is going to be the General Stein thing, where I talk about running or whatever, and things I went to in my personal life. I didn't do a half marathon, just so you know. It's fifth overall, better luck next time.
Should we, should we agenda item Stein hour?
All right, my report right there is over now to city stuff. So just, just highlighting Mayor Wheeler is in the audience, our best and longest-serving mayor of all time. So-
I recognize the mayor. Gary, I think that's very rude of you to have paid him off like that before the meeting. I thought we were friends.
I thought it was OGEK, like Gecko, but some people like to call it OJAC, we'll have to get a ruling on this.
It's like Gif and Jif, and they can find me, I'm saying OJAC.
Yeah. Just another thing, I mean, today we had a lot of public comment in a way that we haven't had some time, and that doesn't mean, I, I really appreciate when people come down and, and speak, I mean, we're, we're a city of 87,000 or, you know, whatever, and we don't hear a lot from citizenry. And you can look at that many different ways, from rosy colored glasses and maybe other colored glasses. You know, it doesn't mean I necessarily agree with what everyone says, but I, I do like the ability for people to come and let us know how they feel on things. I personally have, someone called me about the $3 water issue, and I do have a lot of thought as it comes to those people that are not technically savvy, right? People that don't get on the internet and don't have email addresses and things of that nature, and I totally hear where you're coming from, so thank you. So, thank you for that one person that called me and the people that came and talked to us. I can't commit to anything, but it is something to definitely look, to look into. Also, again, I'm not taking any side here, but, you know, people do deserve responses. There are times that people get responses, and they don't like the answer that they were given, and so they say they weren't given a response. But it's just really important that we do our due diligence to make sure that people that have legitimate questions go through the proper channels of filing complaints or whatever else, and they get a response, even if it's something they don't like, just to make sure that everyone's dressed. We see all the emails as council and staff. We see all the emails that come in. Sometimes, there's a lot of back and forth that our staff go in and to, and that's greatly appreciated for the work that's being done there. But, yeah, everyone deserves to be heard, and I appreciate you guys coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other committee or commission reports? I have one brief, one. We had an RV MPO meeting, very quick meeting. Really, the only item of substance relevant to Medford was that the RV MPO, oh, the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization is responsible for allocating federal dollars that come for construction of transportation infrastructure. And so, the only issue of substance relevant to Medford on the agenda was a letter in support, basically a letter to the legislature requesting that they take quick action on addressing the budget shortages for the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT. And that specific item is being taken up by the legislature right now. The House has passed the transportation package. The Senate is currently, it is currently waiting action from the Senate. There's one senator that has health issues, and so the Senate's action on this has been delayed. It also means that the governor has delayed the firing of ODOT staff or the layoff notices until such time as the Senate can take action. And so, hopefully, this will not impact the local services that we have from ODOT. ODOT's been a really important partner for us, in particular, related to a lot of the homeless issues that we've faced and keeping their right-of-ways clean and being a good neighbor. And so, I'm personally hopeful that ODOT is going to be funded so that those services can continue. That concludes the commission and commission reports. Unless council has anything else, I'm going to turn it back to you, Mayor. All right. Seeing nothing. Mr. Field?
So, Mr. Carr just stole my first piece, which was update on the transportation bill. They're supposed, the Senate should reconvene, I think on September 17th is the update, I believe. Cindy Robert is going to be down here, though. Prior to that, she'll be here September 10th and 11th to meet with council and staff. So, please make yourselves available if you want to sit down and have, she was going to provide an update on the legislative session that just ended, give us a preview of the short session coming up, so you'll have the opportunity to spend some time, you know, speaking with her if you so choose. Finally, Fire District 3 is leading a study, a regional fire service planning and capacity study. We will have a detailed update for you shortly, but wanted to make sure you weren't caught off guard when this gets announced. They've got grant funding to pursue the study. Of course, we're sort of the outlier in the, in the region, because we are an urban fire department as opposed to more of a rural-oriented district, so we're going to be paying very close attention and participating, but didn't want you to be caught off guard by that. It is, it's coming, it's coming fairly soon. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Rob? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, when is Cindy going to be down?
September 10th and 11th.
Do we have like a meeting? Did I, did I miss a calendar invite?
No.
Okay, cool.
No, no, no. We're just, we're just final, we just finalized arrangements, and she will be here for, at your disposal.
Sweet. I was frantically looking at my email to see what I had not added to my calendar.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none. We are adjourned at 7:29.
Mura meeting, 7:40.
I was waiting for it to go. But no.
Every other landowner down through Mancanita, they aren't considering that. Then I had a urban renewal person come and says, "Well, we need this, but we also need this and this." And I go, "You know, you give me one offer and then you got a month things going on here. Why aren't you organized? Present yourself." I'm not happy with MIRA. I'm not going to sign papers until we have it situated. And I think the thing is exploitation of other landowners in Mancanita area that may not be as sophisticated as I am at reading things and understanding government could be outright exploitation. Let me say that again, outright exploitation. If these people take the money MIRA offers them and they have to go with a whole hell of loan or they go to sell their property, then they're going to have to redo the pins and that's $35,000 to $4,000. That's being having been included in here in the offer. So I just want to make that clear to you. I have no idea what a temporary construction easement denotes. I would like, that would be something to do. And there's a dedication of easement, dedication of right of way and recovery of monuments. There's a survey, surveyor, Medford surveyor, Mr. Hertz communicates very well and he could tell me basically something. But I did have MIRA representative tell me that smaller strips of land, you pay less than you do larger strips of land, which is not economically correct. You have a small strip of land, it's just like economics. By some large group of things, you pay less than you would in a smaller group quantity, you pay more. So anyway, I'm speaking for a lot of landlord owners there in Mancanita that they need to look at some other aspects in regards to surveying pins that will have to be reestablished. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kurlinger, go ahead. Mr. Miles, Mr. Miles, you have a question? A question is for you.
Sorry, I sprung it on you. You, your comment of $35,000 to $40,000?
No, $3,500 to 4,000 per survey come out.
I'm sorry, say it again. You're saying it's a variance in the overall square footage?
No, no. You have a surveyor come out to do two pins will cost anywhere between $3,500 to $4,000.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I talk fast.
That's okay. I just misunderstood the number. So $3,500 to 4,000, not in what is inherently necessarily missing from the offer, but that's how much it would cost for a homeowner, a landowner to have them out to resurvey.
Yeah, they do it. Do it again. So if they sell land, it's not included in there because if they sell land again, they have to reestablish the pins. They can't go off the, what the recovery, recovery of the monuments does not go with the bank.
Okay, understood.
And when you sell the property, I'm not a real estate professional, but...
I have, now I feel like it was a loaded question. I am. But I just want to make sure I understood the point you were making. But now, that makes sense now. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Consent calendar, nothing. Public hearings, none. Resolutions, none. Board business. Where am I? It's eight, 90. Okay, 90. Why would board business be first? Does anyone have any board business? We'll come back to that if anyone does. All right, director staff reports. Mr. Weiss or Mr. Binton?
So I'm going to tee this up and then I'm going to defer all the hard questions to Mr. Weiss.
Fair.
So what we've got here in our last meeting, we had a lively discussion about Living Waters Church. And one of the things they emphasized in that meeting is they really, time is money, and they really did hope that we would move quickly in terms of the grant agreement. And we had a good discussion about how to frame that. And there's, there's two ways in which we could move this forward in order to move, potentially move as expeditiously as possible. In the AIC, I lay out the material terms as staff took them at the end of that discussion. And what we could do as one way to move this forward is if the board was comfortable with this, the board could through motion delegate to staff to draft, negotiate, execute an agreement containing all these terms and execute with Living Waters Church ASAP and then bring it back to the board for ratification at the end. That's not the normal way in which we do agreements, but it is the most expeditious way in which we could get this accomplished. If the board would like to review, and this would be a relatively complex document, we're talking about $175,000 grant plus $175,000 loan, 0% interest, not amortizing, loan due on sale of the property. If the board would like to see that before we approve it, what we can do is we can go through the ordinary course and have something ready for the board at the September 17th regularly scheduled MIRA meeting. And so we're looking for some direction from the board. And if the board wants us to move as expeditiously as possible, this delegation was, and then subsequent ratification is one way I found to move faster than a normal timeline. But I did want some guidance from the board on whether or not that's something you wanted us to do under these facts.
So we have two questions before us. The first question is in regards to seeing all of the minutia of the paperwork. Is there anyone that feels the need, or is there a sufficient amount of people that feel the need to look at under the hood of how all the language works? I am not seeing none. Okay. So the second part is the, what we have in front of it itself. So on your agenda packet, it mentions $175,000 grant and then $175,000 loan at 0% interest, which is due at the sale of property. So is there any discussion over that second point about the $350,000 in total, half, a half given to them and then half loan? Is there any discussion on any of that? Mr. Mayor?
So I should have done better research before I got here. I'm not quite sure when this proposal showed up in front of the MIRA. And, and, and the plan is, it is what it is. But I always go back to the, the statute staying, basically where the MIRA's jobs are to get rid of blight and improve economic activity in an area. That's kind of the basic charge. Are we accomplishing that with this project is my question?
So I'm going to...
And I mean, I mean that more like, I don't have enough background, but on face value, it looks a little bit like, oh, does that mean?
Sure. Mr. Card, did you have?
I was just going to comment because I also have some reservations about this project. But ultimately, the way I look at this is that we are coming in on the tail end of a project where had we been involved in the beginning of this project, it would have been like unambiguously a MIRA role. But where we're coming in on this project is they have done a lot of the facade improvements. They've done all of the blight removal type of stuff that normally MIRA would have funded. And now they're reaching sort of the end of this project and running out of money to complete everything to get the building turned over. And so while if we were talking about this in the set of a project where we had a perfectly fine building and somebody was trying to do some renovations in the interior and it was like, ah, okay. But I, looking at where this particular project has gone and the work that they've put into this, I feel like had they involved MIRA in the beginning, we would have happily given them money in the beginning to do the blight reduction pieces. And that would have carried them through to completing the end. And so while I agree that it is not, this dollars being applied strictly this project are not, in my opinion, within the strictest understanding of blight removal, I can stretch that definition in a way I feel comfortable with to be a part of this project.
Counselor Ayers?
So I too struggled with this project. But when we talk about, it wasn't, they're not necessarily requesting money for blight reduction, but rather for seismic, which we did have dedicated funds for. So to next point, had they come to us in the beginning when they were doing this and asked for the seismic, it would have been kind of a no brainer, I think. The one thing that I wasn't really clear on in their presentation is the future of the building because they're, they're doing like a commercial component to it where they're potentially, now correct me if I'm wrong, people who know, they're potentially renting out portions of it or selling it, which now turns it potentially into some sort of economic driver as opposed to just being a church building. But can anybody add more color to that?
Oh, I know Mr. Keating had his hand up, but if Mr. Kurlinger can directly answer that question.
You can kind of cut first.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to Counselor Keating.
All right. Yeah, I was just going to say, I thought we'd rehashed most of it at the long meeting where we talked and we were just going to figure out the funding for it tonight. And it seems like we're getting back into the discussion of whether we should fund it at all. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
I mean, there, there was plenty of discussion when we had that meeting. And so it's perfectly appropriate two months later for people to still have questions about, about how things were going. I mean, not every, as you know, not every question was maybe sufficiently answered at that, at that meeting. Counselor Kurlinger?
Okay, so to, I go to Living Waters Church. I have no financial stake. I've been advised by Eric. It's okay for me to have an opinion on this one.
It's, it is not a conflict of interest under Oregon law, so he's not required to recuse himself from discussion or vote.
I'll talk a lot less than last time. To my knowledge, there's no, I'm not aware of any intent to sell the building. I think they intend to be there, they intentionally got a building in the heart of downtown to be engaged in downtown. I know there's been discussion of like, can there be workspace stuff or a childcare center in there or, I don't want to speak out of class or out of, out of turn, like maybe even doing a, some kind of Lions meetings or something, like using the front space of it for like some catered events or something like that. So there's elements of like, well, this is a really big building. How can we help make it self-sustaining? And I know that there is an effort to want to be engaged with the city. It was a fire relief center during Almeda, and they've had discussions about could this be an emergency shelter or help serve the city in times of crisis and other ways. None of that's possible without the seismic retrofitting. All that to say, that's like anecdotal knowledge I have just from knowing people. I'm not involved in any decision making there. I think this makes sense, Mike. It's part of the seismic retrofitting, which we had a program and funds available for. Is the building blighted now? No, because they spent a lot of money making it not blighted. I think before Living Waters had it, this was a big empty environmental nightmare for downtown. So I'm very clearly biased because I think the people who run the church are good people. Otherwise, I wouldn't be a part of it. But I also think their engagement with the city and with downtown fits really well. I think, Harry, you had said something that MIRA's real intended purpose is to prevent the degradation of property value and tax base, which Living Waters, I think, has done very effectively with this building and in that neighborhood. And I do like this workaround where it is a partial grant, but some of it is recouped upon the sale of the building. So let's say they did decide to go, gotcha, now we're out. I mean, this is probably 10% of the value from when they purchased it. So it's not nothing. But it's still something that's like executing the intended purpose of the funds while not apparently just giving a huge hound out to someone who may benefit substantially from it down the road.
We'll go to Counselor Quinn.
Oh, I just wanted to mention on the 26th of this, last August, we did a tour with Latino founders. And this was one of the sites that they were considering possibly setting up one of the commercial kitchen slash culinary incubator locations. And, you know, so they were definitely interested in renting it out, if not selling it. So just so you know, it's not blighted and they are looking to rent it out and receive money for it.
Yeah, I know there's been talk of potentially renting out certain parts of it or different spaces as a sustainability measure for that organization as a whole. There's no, to my knowledge, there's no plans to sell it. If I hear about that when I'm at church on Sunday, that'll be a really big surprise to me.
And this was purely preliminary exploratory, looking at various different options in, in town. But certainly renting was on the table when we, we talked to Jerick about it.
Counselor Ayers?
Just real quick procedural question. So if we do this as a loan component with a kind of indefinite payable upon sale, where do these funds go in 30 years when they sell the building?
And that question, I'm phoning a friend.
Good evening, Board. Harry Weiss, project specialist. So let me, let me just back up before I answer your question if I'm by Ms. Ayers. Mr. Mayor, I think we're conflating two questions. We have a program that is an adopted feature of the Urban Renewal Plan, which is seismic assistance for downtown buildings. That relationship to blight is not necessarily direct linkage. In supporting seismic and supporting sprinklers, what we are doing is we are building out resilient infrastructure of downtown buildings and adaptability over the long term. And in that respect, that strengthens those properties to be more viable, economically viable, have more economic opportunities that could be exploited here. And that's the same thing that the church found itself with, that by going to this seismic work, they can expand their capacity for assembly function. So it's not really much different than us giving a seismic grant to an organization that puts, introduces a restaurant into a business occupancy or puts a sprinkler system in and makes it a more safe building for the long term and a more adaptable over the long term. So I think the blight question is kind of a side question. This combination of loan and grant is something that I discussed with them on the basis of the input that the board had at the last meeting, that there was some concern because they did say in their presentation that they were contemplating the sale of the building and leasing back as a tenant and finding a commercial operator to own and do the, do all that. And I think what we've done by splitting this in two is that we've acknowledged that we have a nonprofit organization that is worthy of support for the seismic retrofit grant. But if they were to turn around and sell this in six months, it would be a windfall when in fact we might not have done that for a commercial developer. And that's why splitting this in two, saying, we're going to have a loan that's going to sit on this. And if they sell the building, fine. To your question about what happens in 30 years, two things. The successor to MIRA, if MIRA is no longer in existence, is the city of Medford. Alternately, we could have this amortizing loan be forgiven after a term. If they hold it for 10 years, we could just wipe it out. If that would be a concern, we could add that as a provision in, in the loan portion of the non-amortizing loan that's secured against the property.
Ms. Kurlinger?
Just wanted to point out, I didn't know that. I didn't have insider knowledge, but I just learned something now, too.
All right. It seems like we have a good round of questions. Mr. Keating?
Thanks. I'm going to revise just one thing. I would like to see a copy of the actual final thing if, just by email, for instance, or something before the 17th meeting, if that's possible.
We could certainly, if, if, if the board decides to delegate staff, of course, we can send you a copy of what's drafted to keep you in the loop. That just means that we don't need to bring it back to the board for approval to execute.
Okay. And then just one other thing is, if I understand this correctly, like you've determined from our discussion during the meetings that the half and half situation would be the best way to go forward? Or did we decide that?
Oh, that was something that we went over for like a fair amount of time.
I remember being there.
And we gave direction to. You can watch the whole meeting on Channel 170 or whatever it is.
So we voted to do it half and half?
Right.
Or, okay, we didn't?
We did not, there was direction given, general direction given. It was not unanimous in a way to go there. But this was, this seemed to be the split, right? This seemed to be the split where we could move something forward.
Okay. As a procedural matter, I would recommend if there's any hesitation about the, the proposal we've got here reflecting the board's intent, please don't delegate to staff and then have second thoughts when it comes back for ratification. That places staff in a really awkward position. So if there's any hesitation about this game plan, please just tell us to bring it back in the ordinary course.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to direct staff to draft an executed grant loan agreement as presented and subsequently bring the executed agreement back to the MIRA board for ratification.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Since I did miss the previous long-winded meeting that I'm hearing so much about, I do feel a little bit behind on this. And one of the things that stands out to me is, and I haven't reconciled this, is the use of the, of the public funds essentially for a non-property tax paying entity. And that's something I'm struggling with. I do think that, that the monies that we, we put out are intended to, at the end of the day, drive reduced blight to make increased economic viability. I'm sure there's a finding that could be made that makes it fit that. But I do, I just struggle with that and haven't quite reconciled it. So I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Garrett West?
Yes.
Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
Nick Card?
Yes.
Michael Zarazinsky?
Abstain.
Kevin Stein?
Yes.
Zach Smith?
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yeah, yes.
John Quinn?
Yes.
And Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
We have eight yes and one abstention.
Thank you very much. That is the end of our votes for the night. Was there any, going back, is there any other board business? Okay, any proposition, propositions or remarks from board members? Seeing none. We do have an exec session, MIRA exec session in the Medford room. We are adjourned time 8:04.